Okay.
Okay.
Detective.
That's why, that's why the yell was off. The mayor's right to get that.
Okay, you ready, Jim?
Yep, we're live.
Good afternoon, I call the meeting at four P M. As always, I ask everybody to switch off their mobile devices, put them on the satellite or vibrate. Okay, first up, we got, uh, the council here by accept the agenda for Tuesday, October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, regular media council should be admitted, uh, they're, uh, move by. So you see my counsel, there's a couple of verbals I will give updates on in twelve A. Anything else? I mean fourteen eight, uh, twelve, sorry, twelve A. Anybody else? All in favor? Great, thanks. Any get this, uh, this portion of interest today? Hearing them, I have a motion here that council hereby adopts a minutes of regular media council held on Monday, September twenty-sixth, and opposed media council held on Monday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, certainly made a move back. Council Lake, some of the council, any questions, errors, or missions in those minutes? Hearing that call a question, all favor? There, thank you. Okay, today we have Adam Brown and Beth Line, H R manager for Nosh. They'll be here, given a delegation on the situation over at Marathon Memorial General Hospital, and chairs being caused them, just an update, not such a sort of update in regards to our health cares are, uh, surviving through this, uh, this, this time. Definitely.
She's gonna talk. Ask her questions. Uh, thank you, Mayor Dimas, and council for the invitation today to talk about our operations over at Wilson Memorial General Hospital. There's any value for the, the council to ask questions afterwards, and we are happy to take those questions, but your council lake was eager to ask questions prior to the meeting, so we'll maybe entertain those afterwards. So for those that don't know us, I think everybody does, North Superior Healthcare Group, uh, Nosh, owns and operates the twenty-two bed room, or hospital, uh, Memorial General Hospital in Marathon. They also operate on behalf of Marathon Senior Supportive Housing Corporation, the Pinstal Manor Support Seated Fort of Living Facility, and our joint governors with Town and Marathon operation as well. We directly employ approximately a hundred people in Marathon, if it is not, on a full-time equivalent basis, that's about seventy staff. So we are likely, I don't have evidence to support this, but likely the second largest employer in the, in the town of Marathon. Uh, so it's important that we do our job well, and, and as partners that we do our jobs well collectively. We are looking at growths on the horizon, we did talk earlier prior to the meeting about our long-term care home announcement, which was made in February of two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, when we work through the, the process, the bureaucracy of those approval, approval processes and development and all that, uh, we will be building a fourteen by long-term care home, which will employ likely fourteen nursing-related positions, so eight full-time and six part-time nursing-related positions. So there'll be some support services like you might expect, uh, housekeeping, laundry, maintenance, some administration folks and all that, so likely another five to six employees in, in those fields. So a total, uh, employment build of about twenty full-time equivalent position when we get, uh, our new, uh, long-term care board, uh, their long-term care home up and running. Currently staffing is a challenge, full stop. In fact, we just went through a exercise all afternoon to figure out how to staff our facility tonight, and tomorrow, and several other times during the week, we are constantly short of nurses in our community, as is almost every other community in Ontario, and for that, more part, most of Canada is struggling for, for nurses. Currently, we employ six, six agency staff, although one of them didn't show up for work today, which is an interesting challenge with agency staff contracted staff are not terribly committed to their work, especially with the, the wages that they make, that they don't have to work a lot of time. Uh, so six, uh, six staff, uh, we are employing three agencies, and we rent five local homes or apartments to support those agency staff, and you can just imagine the budgetary impact of that. And more important than the budget, than the budgetary impact is the impact on quality and commitment to the community, it's, it's a, a significant challenge, uh, to keep all of our existing staff motivated and, uh, incented to, to work hard when we have some of the contract staff. Going forward, it's not going to get easier, and I think we're all feeling it as employers in our communities and in developed countries. Beth tells me that in the next two years, we'll have an additional ten percent of our staff retiring, so another ten people will be retiring, and if I look out another five years, another ten percent will be retired, so we'll have twenty percent of our staff retire in the next five years. Above and beyond that, there's natural churn, the people leaving the communities as spouses of, uh, our resource industry, uh, going off for education opportunities, or for whatever reason, uh, leave an organization, that churn is ridiculously and unsustainable high, at twenty-five percent per year. So we're turning over in our whole Nosh, which has two hundred employees, including Terrace Bay, fifty employees a year. People like Beth are very busy onboarding and deboarding the staff on a routine basis. Yeah, and these challenges are not unique to Marathon or to Nosh, they're endemic in the industry. I forget where it is, but there was a hospital down in the Great Bruce, so one salmon area that just announced this week, early last week, they're shutting their E R down until December second. So this is happening everywhere. We actually have a C E O, hospital C E O committee in Northern Ontario, that meets three times a week to talk about E R closures and trying to avoid them. So the nearest term, nearest community that's actually had a near shut is Red Lake, uh, but we've had numerous, numerous close calls in all of our communities, including one community that I won't name, that ran with a single doctor for seven days straight, manning the E R. That is highly risky and obviously terribly unsustainable. You know, the increasing, the aging population, increasing aging population in our communities in our country is not only increasing the demand on our healthcare, but it's decreasing our labor supply. So this is a double-edged sword, as you get older, you demand, you require more healthcare services, there's not enough young people to serve them, so we're going, you know, opposite of where we need to go. So it's going to be an interesting challenge to, uh, to tackle here, probably over the next twenty years, honestly, this is not going to go away soon. Uh, as you might expect, Beth and her team are not sitting idly, uh, doing nothing here as we struggle through staffing. Uh, we have a number of recruitment incentives in place, and are continuing to look at what recruitment might look like. We are not going to get into the, I'm going to spend more money game, uh, there's always a bigger fish that will offer more money, but we do offer a fairly attractive relocation package to help, uh, new employees settle into Marathon and area, and, uh, and incent them to stay for a little bit, but it's not a gigantic amount of money, again, we won't play that game. Uh, we do, however, invest a lot of energy and time and money into onboarding. So most of our new nurses, uh, because of the pandemic primarily, but schooling in general, come out very green, very theoretically skilled, but practically unskilled. So we invest up to six months in training for nurses, make sure as much as possible that they will be successful in their, their new work, and those are supernumerary nurses for up to six months, so not terribly valuable for, for quite a while, so like an apprentice, right? A first-year apprentice is great at getting coffee, uh, not very good at welding necessarily. Uh, so we have that same challenge in our, in our nursing ranks, and I don't want to exclude the rest of our staff. If you ever tried to hire a cook lately, it's not an easy thing, you don't talk to any of our restaurant operators, housekeepers, maintenance folks, that across the, across the board, it's staffing is a challenge in our business and in every business. We are, again, not sitting back, we have what we call Grow Your Own Initiative, so currently we have, we're hosting a R P N, so Registered Product Nurse Class of Ten, uh, at our Terrace Bay, McCallum Hospital site, those ten students are all local to Marathon, Manitowash, Terrace Bay areas, and so we're very hopeful that we'll retain one hundred percent of those, at least in our general area, but about six or seven are from Marathon and/or Big Bang and/or Neverside, I think. Uh, so that will be helpful next year, or next April, when they graduate. Uh, and we're going to be building upon that, so we need to have these R P Ns and P S Ws and R A classes routinely, just working over and over and over. We're working with our four secondary educational providers, notably Confederation College, Lincoln University in Nausum, on how we can support their business so they can support us. So we're open to placement opportunities at all times, we employ summer students, uh, above and beyond what we get funding for, and, and those sort of things, to try to build relationships and, uh, expose those potential students, the potential employees to our operations, and why they might want to come work for an auction and live in Marathon and or Terrace Bay. And finally, as a last resort, again, we mentioned that we're contracting agency staff, uh, without giving away any, any, uh, specific contract details, we're paying well over one hundred dollars per hour for these agency staff, plus transportation, plus accommodation, plus, plus, plus. So it's a, an absolutely unsustainable model going forward. Final thing that's a little bit out of our control, but we potentially could use some advocacy support for is government policy, two pieces of government policy in particular that are barriers for us, Bill one twenty-four, I can't remember the exact name of the bill, but Bill one twenty-four restricts wage increases to one percent in our industry, uh, for unionized workers, one percent does not keep up with eight percent inflation very well, and, uh, that's a long-term challenge, I think, is driving people from the industry and not incenting young folks to get into the industry. Especially the broad public sector executive compensation act is actually restricting wage increases to zero percent for, for non-union designated executives, some people like myself, and I will, I'll whine about my, my salary, you know, and I saw her, but long-term, if you don't set your leaders appropriately, they won't come into your business either, or will seek, uh, different opportunities. What can the town do, uh, besides what you already do, the town is, Town Marathon is a very supportive partner of Nosh, uh, we hope, hopeful that you will continue to participate in our community recruitment and retention committee, so that's a, a community that supports Brett Redman and all his efforts to attract and retain physicians in the community, and that's a very successful model, which has been implemented first at Terrace Bay, but in many other communities as well. Marathon is, and Terrace Bay is, are one of the few communities that have not had physician challenges throughout the pandemic or now. Knock on wood, that, that continues, uh, partly because of the efforts of, of yourselves and participation in mine. Be open if we knock on the door for things like, you know, minor incentives, so if we say, hey, can we get some, uh, some pool passes for recruits, or something like that, I don't know what that might be, hopefully you'd be open to, to minor, uh, opportunities like that. Big, big picture, housing, I know you heard about that in the, uh, the council or at the candidates debate the other night, uh, housing is an issue, housing has become expensive in Marathon all of a sudden, so that's not a selling point anymore, more so than being expensive, it's not available. So anything that council can do to support housing development in the community is, is greatly appreciated, and we want to be part of that solution as well, and are happy to be tapped on the shoulder to say, can you help us in whatever issues might come up? And we don't think about this, but council has done a really good job of making Marathon an attractive place to live, and live, work, and play is, is the slogan, right? As, as minor as basic infrastructure, lots of communities would love to have the loop, right? So let's not forget about things as basic as sidewalks. Loop over, over yonder, no such town needs to work, just if I can put a button, right? Let's make sure that basic infrastructure, so the roads, the sidewalks, the recreational facilities, all that sort of thing, continue to be attractive for people who want to live in Marathon, because they currently are, if they're not maintained, if they're not, if new ones aren't built every once in a while, that's my plug to the new candidates, uh, then, then that advantage that Marathon has looks very pretty quick. And finally, if I could add, uh, you know, communities, uh, beyond healthcare are successful for a number of reasons. If, if my, uh, vision is correct, you have to have the right people in place, including all of you guys as leaders of communities, there has to be an economic opportunity, so some way that we can make a living in our communities that differentiates ourselves from, from our, our neighbors and our, our competitors, if I can call that. A successful community needs healthcare, so if you don't have a hospital and a good primary care, uh, program and, and mental health intervention service in the community, chances are it's not going to be an area that's going to grow into the future. Better have a good education system, all right, from J K, let's go beyond J K, right down to daycare, and up through the college and university ranks, you need some education to attract families to stay, communities without high schools, and you know, a number of them in our area have a lot of trouble, trouble retaining their, uh, adult or their teenage age families, right? Because you don't want to keep, stick your kid on the bus to travel for an hour each way every day. Finally, safety, so our, our fire chief in the back here, you better have a strong police and, and fire system in the communities, infrastructure we talked about, including recreation is critical, and finally, location, which you cannot influence, but you can take advantage of your location, wherever it might be, so perhaps the town of Marathon is not going to have a ballet or, or something like that, but take advantage of what is, what Mother Nature has offered you and take, and, and capitalize on that. Could you take any questions, Bill?
Great, and thanks a lot, Adam, I appreciate that, and I'll welcome to that if there is any questions.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Adam, that was a well said, and I, you know, it's funny, I think everybody in the region, and probably in Ontario, would say that healthcare, like it's, Marathon's a bit of a miracle around healthcare, it's a, it's a, it's a good system, we're not short generally, so this is a bit of a different speech from you, um, and a little bit more dire. I appreciate you pointing to some of the things we can do. I wonder, as part of our strategic plan, whether we can, uh, maybe invite you to a further discussion around, uh, what can we do in terms of advocacy? Yeah. So I'd say that, and then, I, I just, I'm trying to remember back in time, but I remember when, when, thinking ten years ago, it seemed like all the nurses that were in that hospital, and there seemed like there were lots of them, were from like one cohort that went through a, a local program, so I just, I, I don't remember the exact history, but I remember the outcome being successful, I don't know if you can speak to that.
Yeah, so that was about fifteen years ago.
No, oh my goodness.
Twenty years ago? It was in my time, and I've been there sixteen years.
At least fifteen.
Yeah, I've been there sixteen years, so it's in my memory, and that was through Northern College in partnership with Northern College, when colleges could train R Ns in a three-year program, and you're absolutely right, there was six or seven or eight, our local R Ns that came to that program, and probably four or five of them are still working. They're all at retirement age now.
And committed to the community.
Right, that's exactly right. So one of the things we, besides Confederation College and, and Nausum and, and Lincoln University, we do support our, our P Ns that want to advance our careers to R Ns, repay their tuition, boom! We'll help you with your, your, uh, time off, your scheduling flexibility, that sort of thing. But it's clearly hasn't been enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, uh, have a, I guess, acclaimed mayor who's part of the executive on quite a few things, immigration being, being an issue, and then I guess certification for the immigrants coming over, is there anything that, uh, through our municipal, I guess, agencies, uh, pressure or, or sway the government to make those transitions ea- easier, even interproventurally, make those things easier?
Yes, uh, I, I won't speak to interproventural, but internationally educated staff is, is something that's on everybody's radar, and there's recent legislation that came out, actually supports, uh, internationally educated nurses to get their licensure and that sort of thing. Our experience with internationally educated nurses is, is A, that the training is different, it's, it just is, and that's not good or bad, it just is, and B, when we do get internationally educated folks, they're happy to come here, they work hard, they're good people, but for the most part, they do not want to stay in small communities. So you might attract and retain people for a year or two, and then they'll move to the cities where there's a, a greater opportunity for them to participate in their, in their home community, their cultural events, et cetera, and so we have put a tremendous effort into it, Kelly, uh, Council Tukushi, uh, running international educated nurses, our colleagues to the west in Fort Francis as an example have, and haven't been terribly successful, honestly. So it's not a, an area that we think we're going to pursue for part of the year. But we're, we have to figure where the people are going to come from, ultimately, this is about people. Very good question.
Absolutely. I just, uh, I mean, it's, it's been an interesting evolution from when that hospital was first built, I mean, just structurally, you, you drive into it now, and you've got the health clinic, uh, that's there, you've got the hospital with the long-term care, now you've got the senior supportive housing, and now there's going to be another kind of wing onto that, there, it really is a campus at this point. Do you see, and I, and I think about this relationship you have with, with this education facilities, can that campus become a hub, I know, like, uh, University of Hurst, I think, does, um, nurse training right in Hurst, is that something that it, we could, we could pursue?
Yes, a short answer, yes, a long answer is obviously more challenging than that, but already, both of our hospital sites and our long-term care in Terrace Bay and our Pensum, our senior supportive housing are host to many, many students, it sounds like, uh, so we do things that get accredited by accreditation Canada, which is Beth's baby, to ensure we can host students, the accreditation to do that. Uh, so we have a, one or two physician residents right now in the hospital in, in Marathon, and there's one in Terrace Bay as well. Uh, we routinely, routinely host, uh, nursing students, we currently have one R N student doing replacement in Marathon right now, and again, we have the, the ten-person R P N program underway, and there's probably, you can see that we students are floating around the system, probably at least that right now, yeah, that we are hosting for placements in our various facilities, so absolutely, yes. But it does become, uh, council like a little bit of a chicken and egg thing, you need to have enough staff to provide that mentorship, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Right, yeah, I'm sure you've already looked into some of the, the challenges and feasibility of, uh, the housing issues that you're facing, have you, has there been any dialogue with any of the new developments?
Yeah, yeah, so it, it's actually in our strategic plan that was just approved by our board, uh, earlier this year, to think about social determines the health, and think about, think bigger than a hospital, different than a hospital, so yes, we're a blue H, it has an E R, we have a blue H on the wall, have an emergency room and all things that are, are hospital, but if we truly want to look at ourselves, there's not, there's not an I C U, for example, we're not funded by regional, uh, so we want to and have to be involved in housing development, so, uh, behind the scenes, I work a lot with, with your C A O on housing, uh, worked with, uh, C G B developments on a number of projects, including, I mean, the shirt and the post unit up in, in Penlake, to provide them whatever, you know, in my case, I can provide some financial support to help, you know, walk, uh, the developers through the financial side of the equation, and, and share the, the successes and the challenges of Pinstal Manor as an example, and we're doing the same thing in our, our community of Terrace Bay Scriber, right? So yes, where we can be involved, we want to be involved, um, including, you know, we might have to get into the real estate business, and we have done that in Terrace Bay, we purchased a home, we might have to build something, if it doesn't get built and we have to keep our business running, might be knocking on the door for a building permit, I'm not sure.
I'm glad you're, you're considering that, because I think that is maybe the future where, you know, industry looks at building accommodations for staff, to attract staff, that has either reduced mortgage on, on a purchase or a reduced rent, there's, there are the.
And Mayor Dimas, this is going back in, in history, right? But every hospital used to have a, what they called a nurse's residence, right? And we might be going back to that.
Yeah, for sure, I'm glad you're looking at it, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind, before we wrap it up, like, you did talk about the programs that's, uh, happening down in the Terrace Base site, so that's great, and that's similar to what council legally requested, and that, that should have been ongoing from that fifteen years ago, should have been a, an ongoing treatment, and, and of course, for education, government works in funny ways, we all know, they don't always continue that, whether it's in the healthcare sector, the trade sector, industry, whatever it is, it just goes, stops, goes, stops, but there's ten or fifteen, twenty years between those stops and starts, so I'm glad that's happening. You talked about the, uh, the programs and, you know, the P S W nurseries and all that, uh, you're trying to attract young, young, educated individuals coming into the system, the onboarding and the training, but what about the daycare program you stated, our daycare program, it's not that accommodating, because it's simply a day program, well, if you're going to run into a situation where you're running twelve-hour shifts, how are you accommodating your young professionals to come and have children in the community?
Yeah, you, you spied on our meeting, we just had it noon, so two to two today, and one of the items we're looking at is daycare in our facility.
Okay.
So we do know there are rules for licensed daycare, there are also less rules for non-licensed daycare, where you can employ, or you can take care of five children in a non-licensed daycare facility, and we are looking at that for both of our hospital sites, for that very reason.
And that, that is key, because I, I've heard that many times, I mean, not just in the healthcare, but all over, that our, our facility is a great facility, and great staff, but the operating, limited.
Somebody close to you that would be a beneficiary of something like that.
Well, absolutely, for sure. Uh, in regards to the, uh, the bill, Bill one twenty-four, the executive pay bill, I, I would appreciate you put a summary together and submit it back to me or through N O M A, because I think we have a N O M A board meeting in November, we then go off to Toronto, sit, you know, with our, our, uh, president, N O M A sits on the memorandum of understanding table with the governor of Ontario, we can bring that voice as one and say, listen, we're really struggling, and they, they know what I think it answers, more voices to hear that.
Yeah, uh, we will do that, Mayor Dimas, and, and the focus will be on Bill one twenty-four, just a heads-up, I, I don't want to get into the.
No, no, for sure.
Position of, of advocating for a raise for executives.
Right.
It's important our staff get the raise first.
Absolutely, what you said clearly is about, you know, the cost at about a hundred dollars an hour for your, your, you know, individual, or higher, whatever, but you know, for those agency staff that are coming in to provide the services that you have in your facility, but yet, we're limited to one percent increase to attract those long-term individuals to be in our community.
Yeah.
So you can bump that up and be in a competitive market, in a competitive marketplace, you know, we deal with that with our own staff, you know, we deal with that with industry, what does a competitive marketplace look in our community, might not re- really look the same in, in, in Kitchener and, and Fort Francis as does Marathon, but you can view all that in a, in a kind of a, a fluid way.
Yeah.
Right? Maybe that's the answer, I don't know. I think the other thing is, you know, the council like mentioned about Marathon being recognized as a Cinderella story, we have, and I've heard ministers say it clearly, that Marathon has always been a Cinderella story in regards to our dock situation.
Yeah.
So now we're faced with a dilemma of, of support staff, so let's, let's all work together and try to rectify that, because you're, you're mentioning the fact that you have up to a hundred staff, the Wilson Memorial and the Cosum site combines two hundred staff, that's a huge impact in our local economies, and if you add on the fact that you're going to build additional fourteen-bed facility with an additional up to twenty full-time equity, that's huge.
Yeah.
So we need to have that recognized by the government as well.
Yeah, and, and it's important, I think, Mayor Dimas, to, to not, to not lower, lower us to say it's a Cinderella story, this wasn't luck in our communities, that we have physicians, right?
No, no, for sure.
This was planning, and, and town has been part of that, and, yeah, we actually talked about that as well today, that perhaps we have to try to replicate that model for our staff, so then Beth is not sitting there trying to recruit and do all the other human resource functions that are, are necessary to run in place.
So, so with that, I know council gives a wrong question, so working with the town, hopefully aware that you, you have constant communication with their C E O, Mr. Wilczynski, we do have the two homes, but there's an opportunity to have that, uh, you know, not only physicians, but the support staff to share those facilities if need be, time and time, that might alleviate some of your pressures, but that's this question you can, yeah.
Appreciate that. With, especially the wages, and, you know, for some of the local staff, they may not like what their competitors are making through the agencies, are there any type of the incentives you do it, like bonus or performance, I can sort of offset that wage difference?
No, it's actually quite limited, so we are a unionized working environment, our registered nurses are covered under the Internal Nurses Association, most of the rest of our staff are covered under S E I U, and there's a minor component that is covered under uniform of all unions, and so we just can't simply say, here's your retention.
All right.
And it, it's, it's really an interesting dilemma, in most of our staff, if you ask them today, what do they really want, they would say, I want a weekend off without feeling guilty that I didn't pick up, right?
Yeah.
But in the same breath, it's nice to get double time, or like, you know, maybe I'll have a little bit more energy to pick up the phone, so it's a tough challenge, and, and, yeah, people are incented by money short-term.
Yeah.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
Long-term, you need that balance.
Absolutely. Uh, one, one last comment, if you don't mind, in regards to the agency staff, and, you know, it's an expensive venture, but I, I think that the understanding of the people in the community, because we all here within this one, because we know a lot of people, right? They anticipate and they project that those individuals are making that big bucks, but in reality, they're, within their own contract, they have to pay all their own expenses, correct?
They have to pay their, their C P D E I and that sort of thing, uh, we don't know what the agency employee makes themselves, I only know what I pay the agency.
That's what I mean.
But, and, and there's, there's lots of risk of being in the agency, if anybody wants to be in the agency staff, again, you, you don't know if you have a job tomorrow, right? You might be in a community you want to be for two months, right? You don't have a pension, you don't have benefits, you don't think. But we, we have lost just one, one of our person staff to an agency so far, community like Sue Lookout has lost, uh, is currently seventy-five percent agency staff dependent, so staff are quitting, joining the agency, coming back to work the next day in the same job, but employed by the agency, making twice as much.
Yeah, well, like you said, we're working together, collaborate together with the, it's not as cool as we can to bring that message, so I encourage it between you and Beth, to get that back to me and the information around Bill one twenty-four.
Sure.
And then we can bring that list to N O M A to the, to the annual board.
Yes, for sure, we will, thank you.
Great, thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Appreciate it.
You're welcome to state, but, oh yeah, it's pretty exciting, are we talking about anything fun?
Thanks a lot. Okay, thanks, we have reported on the corporate strategic plan, final progress.
Sorry, worship, uh, were you, uh, more, uh, your delegation, we have a.
Sorry, yes, I did, I missed that, sorry. Yeah, we're gonna, uh, acknowledge the fact that our fire chief, Earl Griggs, uh, as is going to receive a medal this evening from the Federal Service Award, uh, for twenty-five years, so like, wait, hold on, and, uh, he's going to give this medal to the service. Earl, we have the council, the town visiting, all our residents, we appreciate your work, we always do, Marathon, and also the fire chief, this is twenty-five years, worship, thank you very much.
Picture of Mayor Dimas above you.
Thank you. Thanks, Earl. You want that back, Earl? Okay, up next, then, we have report on corporate strategic plan, final progress report.
So, thanks, worship. So this is obviously our final progress report as it relates to our current strategic plan, which will sunset with this term of council, um, and a component of our plan is, uh, at least twice a year, we update council on, uh, our performance with respect to the plan, um, and any adjustments we need to make, so really, this is just a report to wrapping up, uh, the last four years. Uh, so, uh, key advancements in the second half of two thousand and twenty-two have included, uh, active living center architecture modeling, so this is a, a re-envisioned waterfront concept, that's currently being developed by administration, uh, and is planned to be presented to council in early November, um, of course, it'll be a, a public presentation that we'll post, um, it's, it's really. Um, it's, it's really a, a three D block modeling of, of what it could look like on the waterfront. I, I think council will be impressed by the work of some of our, our architects, namely Joe Frye and, and his group of B C and formerly Marathon. Uh, housing was just discussed, uh, at length with respect to N O S H. Um, and administration had, uh, we've begun working on an expression of interest to identify potential builders to complete a stage two, and to complete stage two of the Penn Lake approved plan subdivision. And so we've dug up all those historical documents and we've identified stage two, um, that's been approved on subdivision. We've also found a stage three, which hasn't been approved at the provincial level, but does exist on paper. Um, so we have a planning meeting scheduled for the middle of November. Um, we're bringing in our legal counsel. Uh, we're bringing in our waterworks group, Northern Waterworks. Uh, anybody that, that, you know, works for us, uh, and we're required to, to work on this, uh, we're bringing them in, in November. Uh, it's our plan to be ready with the, the expression of interest, uh, in December. And then bring that to the newly elected council as part of strategic planning, so we can launch it in early two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, the new works and operations facility, uh, Mr. Paris is gonna give an update on that tender as well as the Pebble Beach tender. Um, for the works facility, um, the tender's closed, but it came in over budget. Um, which is not necessarily unexpected, but I think how high it came in was a bit unexpected. Um, so we're gonna be looking at a process, uh, to go back to the bidders on that project and, uh, Mr. Paris will update on that. Uh, Pebble Beach, same thing, uh, came in well over budget. And obviously that's a funded project. Um, by no means does it mean the project is not moving forward. Uh, it just, we canceled the tender. Uh, tendering is a legal process. Um, this didn't meet the requirements of that tender. Uh, now we'll look to utilize a request for proposal process, which gives us much more flexibility in terms of, um, engaging a contractor to do the work for us. Uh, the development of the port authority with Beakdagon, this is, uh, something we've been working on for a number of years. Uh, and we're in the final stages of establishing the board. Actually, I believe their board members get appointed tonight at their council meeting. Uh, and once that's complete, we can finish off with the corporate bylaws. And then that, that structure exists for the board to start making decisions. Um, and the timing is where we wanted it to be. Uh, we had talked about having that work complete by the end of October. Uh, positioning us to, to move forward with the board in two thousand and twenty-three. And at the same time, we've also engaged the Q S L group out of Quebec City. So Q S L is completing uh, a number of studies for us, uh, with respect to the technical infrastructure of the work itself. Uh, as well as looking at potential marketing and contract, uh, development. Uh, so that report will be finalized and presented in early December. Um, and I think the mayor will give an update on, uh, N O H F C, uh, moving forward. And, and that's a certain project we'll submit in two thousand and twenty-three. Um, we talked about the new multi-residential development a bit earlier with the N O S H group. So the thirty unit and the fifty unit are, are both under construction, which will bring eighty new units, uh, to Marathon in two thousand and twenty-three. Those projects are well underway. Um, and one of the final items, um, is we do have, uh, some outstanding N O H F C funding, uh, for the, uh, well, I, we call it the mill site, but I think we'll call it the port authority site. It's, it's a better fit. Uh, looking at, uh, social media and digital marketing. And that'll be hand in hand with, uh, the reports we get back from Q S L. Namely focusing on the areas that, you know, we want to look at, whether it's, you know, the mining industry, forestry, logistics, uh, those, uh, those areas. So um, those key, those are the key projects that administration is finishing off here in the next couple of months. Uh, and other items, as you'll see, it was a busy two thousand and twenty-two. I won't go through them. I'll just highlight some of, uh, I think, you know, really the important ones, you know, our participation in the, the Marathon P G M process. Uh, we submitted our, our comments today regarding potentially legally binding conditions. Uh, those are posted now. Uh, the Trails Association, I think we've seen some excellent infrastructure development around our local trails. Uh, the partnership with Beakdagon and Cole Monroe on the potential of the aquaculture project. Um, we heard from, uh, Mr. Brown, our continued, uh, support and participation with the healthcare recruitment committee. Um, and then just supportive of our, uh, uh, local events like, uh, the fish derby and, and other, uh, projects that we supported. So just to kind of wrap things up, so with the issuance of this final progress report to council, thirty initiatives identified in the plan have been completed or are in progress. Uh, additional six items in the plan were either parked, removed, or will be included in the new two thousand and twenty-three strategic plan. So overall, our plan had thirty-six items in it. Um, and, and, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, and I, I don't like saying it, but we worked through two years of pandemic, uh, to complete our strategic plan. So uh, I thank administration for, for their work on it. Uh, so all the projects identified have been included in this year's budget. Uh, nothing has been unbudgeted. Um, and new projects going forward will fall on the new council as part of our strategic planning and, uh, two thousand and twenty-three budget. So with that, happy to take any questions from council.
Great. Thanks for that update. Anybody has questions? Council, the Bush.
Uh, yeah, considering that we won't be able to tender this thing out in two thousand and twenty-three and all, maybe it's appropriate. I can wait for Mr. Paris's report. Um, that money moving forward, would it be, um, will it be, uh, obviously we keep that money set aside because it's already been allotted. Would twenty-three be looking at topping up those projects? Uh, with, through the budgetary process or since we're not in a leanback situation, would you be coming forward with anything to this council?
Yeah, so I'll separate, Mr. Paris will highlight the process itself. Uh, but just, you know, it's a valid question. And, uh, so really what we're gonna do is we're gonna separate out the, the works project as well as the Pebble Beach project. And the Pebble Beach project is ninety percent funded by Fednor and N O H F C. Uh, we've, we've always pushed those funds out so they're available to us. And our capital component will carry it forward. Uh, with respect to the works projects, a little bit different. Uh, we do have a strategy that we're employing right now, uh, to go back to the bidders on the project. And I'll let Mr. Paris take you through that.
Thank you, then. Always appreciate your point.
Okay, anything else? Council.
Yeah, I, when I just think about that, uh, the development of the port, and I just think that's really one of the things we tasked away after the mill went down, really to find something new there. And that, that seems to be like a place where we can diversify our economy. So if, if Q S L is doing some of the technical stuff, um, it, how is it that we go about reaching a company that may be looking for a central Canada port or, uh, you know, a location in this area? What's the actual mechanism? It's not gonna be, you know, economic development picking up the phone and calling people. What's that process in the next couple of years?
Yeah, that's a, that's an excellent question. Um, and, you know, one is, you know, Q S L's in that business, but, you know, they've already indicated their interest with, to us.
Okay.
Uh, to be our, our operator of record, um, for the site. They have those connections. Um, you know, they, they operate, uh, you know, just top of head, probably six to eight ports in Canada. Um, so that, that would be part of the ongoing discussions once the, the board is in place for the port authority. Um, so a third-party operator likely makes sense. Um, you know, at this point in time to get us off the ground.
Excellent.
They have those established connections. Um, but even just some of our outreach, so we have been in contact with, uh, Goderich, although we didn't get down there. Um, our E D O has been in contact with their port authority. Um, and I, actually that happened this morning, that their third-party operator has reached out and said they'd be interested in coming to visit and have a discussion around the operation of the court. So a- as I, as it picks up steam and, and the project, you know, gains more likes, which it will early in two thousand and twenty-three. Um, we'll, we'll have those opportunities to, to bring back to both councils and Beakdagon and Marathon.
Absolutely.
Uh, and then just the other thing that really pops up to me is, uh, uh, certainly the older council members will remember the last mine boom. Uh, did some economic damage to Marathon in terms of building without financing and, and things. So certainly I appreciate, uh, you know, we have that background as we go to do things the right way. The one group I, I feel like was left out of the last mine boom in lots of ways, uh, was Beakdagon. And I just wonder, uh, you know, the last time they were here, they, the community talked about their struggles in terms of housing. Uh, so I don't know about having, if they would have an interest in being at the table as we discuss, uh, building in Marathon. Certainly when I look around my neighborhood, it's lots of, uh, Beakdagon folks. Um, so I don't know if, if as a stakeholder, they would want to, want to be part of that process of discussing, uh, you know, how, how many homes are needed? Or, uh, if they want to be part of those developments as well?
Yeah, I, I think it's a, it's a valid point. Um, and, and, you know, it's also, you know, we heard it from N O S H, you know, uh, you know, we, you know, I meet regularly with Barrick and might hear it from them. So you know, what, what we wanted to do from a, a housing perspective is there's no question we learned from, you know, some of the, I won't say mistakes, but some of the learning lessons of Marathon's boom history. Um, and, you know, that's why we wanted to put together the strategy on how we're gonna approach it. And once we have that strategy and, and as the support of council, then we can engage with our local stakeholders and talk about, you know, what is the best fit for Marathon and, and supporting them as well. Thank you.
Thanks, anything else? Uh, one, one quick comment on that oversight situation in the late eighties, mid eighties to early nineties was there was a lot of promises made by government as well about financing. And I think this council, uh, administration regards to the election coming forward and give them one, go ahead with administration. The history's there. To understand you're not gonna go and do something without any, any concrete signature on, on a piece of paper saying this fund's in place. So we, we can definitely handle that. I got a couple of quick questions. So when we talk about the expression of interest going to the, to the, you know, developer world, for example, that's a key method because at that time, it was all about the mines coming in. It was fast, fast, fast. They just hustled. They had two or three of them developers. So we can put that out, I think, in regards to that stage two and potentially stage three. Maybe there are some developers out there who would come in and build forty or sixty homes in Marathon and say, hey, I'm gonna put it for sale. Maybe the market's there. So that's a key component. What's that, that strategic plan for phase two and three, right?
Yeah, so that's what we're looking at. So roughly, it, it, the, the stage two is between a hundred and ten and a hundred and fifty lots, uh, up in Penn Lake Heights. Uh, and that's what we'd be looking to do is, is pre-qualified, um, qualified developers. And really, you know, that takes the burden off of the municipality. Um, you know, we all, we'll ultimately make some money through land sales, but, you know, our money's gonna come from uh, taxation from new homes and new families moving in. So we found a couple of models that have worked well, uh, in Canada, and we'll be using those to craft our strategy going forward.
Great. And we're gonna hear Mr. Paris on a couple of things, so I'll leave it for there. Uh, the, the marketing of the media, so the, through the social media, through using the heritage funds, and that's still allowable because I was promoting a site for development.
That's correct. So it was all about investment attraction marketing. So what we purposely done, uh, is held off utilizing those funds. Uh, it's fifty thousand dollars. Um, but once we identified through this Q S L study and, and working with the, the port board saying, you know, these are our areas of focus, you know, vis a vis mining logistics. We'll, we'll focus those efforts on those areas and, and really looking at social media and, you know, things like TikTok. That's, that's the way you, you get information out nowadays. So
Amazing.
You know, that's our, our E D O is, is a little younger than I am, as well as much more versed in those platforms.
So I also want to encourage, you know, myself, my portal, I'll be here, but, uh, ready to council coming in as well as administration, the supporting of the continuation of the group of seven trail system. Uh, I was out on, on the weekend and the new trail going along the Carden Cove coastline of the bridge there.
Oh, the bridge is great.
Unbelievable. I ran the twenty-one people on my little hike and it was more people going out while we were coming in. So it's utilized quite dramatically. It's because the access is there now. So that's the key message when we talked about that, it's about accessibility. And it doesn't necessarily mean you can take a wheelchair down there, but you can access the trail. And it, it is one thing I think we've worked with group of seven to is identifying the, the, uh, the toughness of the trail. I don't know if I'm using the right word, but the difficulty, thanks.
Reading.
Reading of the difficulties because there are some people, when I went for the first walk in the opening, that probably shouldn't have been on the watch. And not, not necessarily because of their mobility issues. So, uh, there was a bit of a, there was areas that are, that are very, very rugged. So that is good. It's just identifying that beforehand, and then people would understand their, their ability to go on trip, not just for locals, but for visitors alike.
Yeah, and I think it just, I could make a couple of points on that, your worship. So, you know, one is, you know, for the public and for new council, you know, the money that's dedicated there or that as dedicated to, uh, the, the trails group comes from our municipal accommodation tax. So it's not something we levy. It's something that, you know, we generate through the visitation in Marathon, which is really important. Uh, and the second is, uh, you know, we, we've had some discussions, um, with the Thunder Bay C E C about how we can participate in the crew ships, uh, the Great Lakes cruising. Um, and things like trail development, those are ideal things that they're, they're really looking for a one-day stop in Marathon. We'll obviously have the port uh, and the wharf to accommodate it. So those all fit from, you know, that, that type of initiative as well.
Great. Anything else? Great, thanks for that. Up next, we have report electronic monitoring. It's good, Jay. Everybody's got it on.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dumas and council. Bill eighty-eight, the Working from Workers Act amended employer obligations under the Employment Standards Act with respect to electronic monitoring of employees. Employers with twenty-five or more employees as of January first of a given year are required to implement a policy on electronic monitoring and provided to all existing and new employees within thirty days. For two thousand and twenty-two, the policy must be implemented by October eleventh and provided to all existing staff by November eleventh. T M S zero zero two zero electronic monitoring policy has been developed to meet the town's legal requirements under the Working from Workers Act. Administration is confident the policy provides transparency as it relates to how, when, and why electronic monitoring occurs in the workplace. In general, the town utilizes electronic monitoring mechanisms for the purpose of maintaining security of resources with information, demonstrating compliance and mitigating liability. Information related to monitoring is assessed on an as-needed basis only by the necessary parties to help uphold privacy and confidentiality obligation. There's no financial implications to this policy. Your options are A, approve policy T M S zero zero two zero as presented. B, approve the policy with additional or alternate revisions, or C, do not approve the policy. Your administration recommends that option A be selected and that the policy for electronic monitoring be approved as, as presented. Further, that this policy be included in the town's policy guideline manual.
Great, thanks for that update. I do have a motion here that council hereby accepts the attached report recommendation on electronic monitoring policy. The policy T M S zero zero two zero electronic monitoring policy is approved as presented. Further, the copy of this T S, T S M zero zero two zero electronic monitoring policy be included in the town's policy guideline manual. Move by. Council, we should say, but council, like, questions? Council.
Um, so just sorry, I, I saw the list of the, the places we're allowed to monitor. Um, it, was this bill designed to protect workers or to protect employees? I don't, I didn't quite, like, is it a bit of both?
I think it's a bit of both, yeah.
Okay, so maybe just what's at the heart of this, that we should be able to safely monitor what's going on, but not overreach?
Yeah, I think it's a bit of both, but I think so employees are aware what, how we're tracking and what we're looking at. Um, just so that they're aware when they're at work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think a lot of this, when we discussed the first part of like two in regards to whether or not they can work beyond, you know, the demand for working beyond that forty-hour, thirty-seven-hour work week as well. But when you're going home, if you were at home, you know,
That's what I was wondering.
Feeding the children and getting coffee and, and, you know, the, the employer is monitoring everything they're doing. They weren't necessarily aware that they were being monitored. So now they're fully aware, uh, that everything you're doing on this computer that's owned by the municipality is monitored, correct?
Yeah, okay. And what we are, what we're monitoring might be a little bit less than what the city of Toronto or other big organizations were. So these are tailored to.
To Marathon, yeah.
Uh, yeah, fun, fun, when, um, let's get to it. Video surveillance and obviously video cameras now with some of the vandalism we've had, we decided we're gonna install them. Uh, our requirement is to let our employees know, what is our requirement? Or are we under any obligation to post for the public that know that they are being video surveilled, uh, at these locations or they may be video surveilled? Because sometimes cameras aren't as obvious as, um, and for security reasons, they're not as obvious. But do we have a requirement to let the public know? Or is it because of public domain or public access, they, they have limited right, I'll say? To know that to be surveilled?
Yeah, I can take that one. There's, there's, there's no requirement. We obviously can't put cameras in, um, changing rooms. Um, but we are gonna be implementing, uh, a camera system throughout the community. We did see a lot of vandalism this summer. Um, but just, uh, you know, by best practice, we will be posting in all of our facilities. You know, you know, when you walk in, you are on camera and you are being recorded.
As, as much as a deterrent as a call.
That's correct.
Okay.
Very good.
That's good.
Great. Thanks for that report. I did, uh, I'm moving on to second is commission official. Okay, thank you. Nice for that. Up next, we have report on tree canopy policy. I missed updated Mr. Work Castle public beach and tenure submission, Mr. Ferrer, sorry. I'm so excited about the tree.
It's lots of trees, though.
Well, there is, I like trees. Anyway, uh, thanks for mayor and council. Um, and Daryl's mentioned a little bit, so I may be repeating a little bit as we go through things. I just kept it to bullet form. And basically, you know, just a quick update on the two projects, Pebbles Beach and Public Works. Uh, they did go to tender, they closed in September, and this administration wanted to give you current status on those projects. So previously, the Pebble Beach is pegged at one million, um, and Public Works facility is seven point seven. Both projects were, were over budget. So I'll break it down into two projects. I'll break it down in the Pebbles Beach, and I'll break it down in the Public Works, and we'll talk about that if you have any questions. So in pub, in regards to Pebble Beach, that project closed on September twenty-second. We had two bids. One was not compliant because it was not filled out properly. The other one came in overpriced. Uh, so it was compliant, way over budget. So through the bid process, it was advertised on works publicly. It was also notified that that project would not be awarded by the town of Marathon because the bid was over budget. That notice has been sent out, noticed, uh, to the public. And I think when we look at that project, um, we only received two bids. Um, it doesn't show a lot. And I think when we look at that project, um, we only received two bids. Um, it doesn't show a lot of value. Into I say fair pricing, equal pricing and accountable. So we looked at the lack of interest and the over budget price. Uh, and when I see that, it's almost like there wasn't a lot of time invested in pricing this project out. So we looked at several things. We looked at maybe the time factor as a fall project impacted that pricing and lack of pricing. So we were re, uh, you know, restructuring the documents to look at a spring construction. Uh, and hopefully with an R F P to reach out to local contractors that have done work for the town of Marathon will show interest. So we're hoping that as we do this, um, restructuring, re-tender, we're going to have some numbers to use. We'll go at that, that point by October and come back in November with some new, uh, you know, bid numbers coming in from the R F P.
Counselor.
Uh, yeah, so.
You're going to address.
You know, if you, I could do one at a time, I could do both because a lot of the factors will leave, but go ahead. No, I'm fine with either way.
I'll wait.
Okay. Cause I may answer it now when I get through it all. Okay. Thanks. Um, so that's in Pebbles Beach. Regards to the new public works facility, that project closed on September fifteenth. Um, that again was through pre-qualification as we publicly announced that on Merx. We shortlisted that to four, um, vendors or four contractors. We did receive four compliant bids. Um, all four bids came in over budget. Um, the town of Marathon is currently engaged with three of the lowest bidders, um, through the post-bid addendum. So since the be, the bids exceeds the town of Marathon is unable to award the contract bid. But we are unwilling to abandon the project. It gives us the right through the C C D C contract under section thirteen to negotiate with the three lowest bidders and has a rebidding. So at this point, the closing date is scheduled on October twenty-sixth. Uh, and administration will be notified and council bids as soon as we get them. And I guess maybe I'll talk about both projects and maybe some of the impact on it and why we're seeing these things and then we can find, finalize that from there. Um, and I guess in public works, we look at the document there through, through the post-bid addendum, we've made some changes. We've looked at, uh, you know, deleting, removing some items. Uh, one of the big price ticket items that came in when we reviewed with, with senior admin was, you know, mainly the civil work was really high. So we've come up with a structure that we may do some of the work in house. So we deleted, you know, a portion of that and, you know, in discussion with, with Daryl. Uh, you know, we can, we can phase that over three, three years of our forces. And yeah, it might take us a little longer, but we'll get to it. So the focus is now just the building, get the building up and we can do some of the surrounding work afterwards. Uh, we look at, at alternate products. There's a big issue right now within procurement in regards to delivery delays. So we're accepting some alternate products as old as equal. Uh, we want to make sure we're still getting, you know, a facility that's going to be in existence in sixty years from now. So we're looking at those, um, we're removing items such as surveillance systems. We've had it in the budget. We've removed those items. We're going to price them separately and then see what the building comes in without those ticketed items. So we look at that. Um, we're looking at the heating system. Uh, we're looking at electric versus natural, uh, versus propane. You know, we remove the propane tanks, remove the propane concrete. What do we save from there? But what's the cost value over the, uh, the size that we have increased on the main panel coming in for distribution? So we're, we're looking at all those things, um, flooring options, for example, uh, from polished flooring versus, you know, towel concrete. So those are prices we see will be high. We had a fuel based system, uh, in, in the project as, uh, the regular gasoline, um, they in, at the public works is an underground tank, uh, just the diesel is actually above ground. So part of the project was to remove that underground tank. We're going to price that separately. So we may have to bunch of that as a separate line in the future, but that'll then give council the idea where we're sitting with those items. Um, and, and I think, you know, just the, uh, when you look at proximity access controls, you know, as technology changes, everyone goes with card access, these things. We removed all that from the project. We went back to the manual lock and key and just to give us a price point of where we can go with it. So, uh, we're working hard on, on that, that project for sure. Um, and I think, I don't think we've left any stone unturned. We really went through the documents there. So I guess another not to add to the other items here. Um, same thing as for Pebble Beach, we're looking at, you know, we're looking, we're looking at a couple of change, but very little. I think the biggest input there was the time and frame of when they wanted the work construction. As we received calls from contractors saying they just couldn't bid because it was late in the season. So, um, and again, impacts on the market, um, we're seeing like an increase of twenty-seven percent. Um, and you know, you've heard Adam speak about things in regards to accommodations, mobilizing fees, cost, living allowances, interest rates are impacting large companies, you know, their borrowing money to buy material. Um, inflation increase in freight, um, fuel costs escalating, uh, building materials, you know, work to weather in this building, you know, it's, it's pretty, it's not a complex building. It's really steel. It's block wall. It's a pretty basic building, you know? So, um, even all those are impacted and the trade wages, you know, the union trades are seeing increases of eleven to twelve percent. So all these escalations are coming in, but, uh, you know, we're very hopeful with the changes we've made. We're going to be coming back to council with some numbers that will represent a good facility. So in a nutshell, that's a, it's a quick breakdown where we go with this.
Great. Counselor.
Okay. So the, because we put it up for tender, we met our tendering policy. We notified the people who participated that we will not tender out based on price. Um, that, so does that, that fulfills our requirements under our policy on tendering and it does it? And it meets the requirements under the Ontario transparency or the, um, I can't remember how they worded it, the Ontario government, uh, permanent or government or tendering issues. Okay. So moving forward, is, is there anything on this year's budget that you're going to need before this council? Is done? Because these were all scheduled for two thousand and twenty-two. So moving forward, are we just moving the funds that we had allocated and then looking forward? So you're not asking for any additional this year, but you're going to make it conditional on the twenty-three budget for those top ups? If need.
So it sounds like these projects are going to go in twenty-three.
In twenty-three.
What Mr. Perez identified as well with the transparency under the, uh, R F P now has given notice on the tenders.
Yes.
We can go to the R F P program for the Pebble Beach project.
That's right.
We're working with the existing tenders.
The existing tenders we're still working with right now. That process hasn't changed.
On the works.
On the works garage. That's correct.
So, so if, if I may, the next question, I understand that the short-term electrical heating or whatever may be the answer, but part of the issue was when we still had the liquefied natural gas, the conversion from propane to liquefied natural gas was very seamless, I'll say somewhat. Is it being shortsighted to really look at that as a cost cutting issue? And or because it was brought up, is there other alternatives of heating, say heat pumps? Because Margaret Toomey, uh, has that had that for, gotta be thirty years. And it's still running and it's still functioning and the initial cost, although maybe high, lessens your operating cost review.
Okay. Yeah. So I can, I can definitely speak on that, Kelly. I've got fifteen, sixteen years with that experience. Uh, generally heat pumps are, um, I think they appear very good in, in new, in numbers. You know, your energy consumption is low. Um, but I believe, um, replacing units after a less than twenty-year life cycle is definitely, you know, has a really method of demand of what it should be. There's been a lot of issues with them and I have had a lot of experience with them. So we look at those options. We look at operating costs too, right? So if your operating cost is increased because you're spending a lot more time on mechanical equipment, where are you really saving? So those are options, but we are like, when I look at electric boilers and gas boilers, we are, that is factors we're taking in. We are considering the natural gas potential and we'll look at those numbers. So once we see those fine two numbers come in, then, you know, I'll sit with Daryl and with council, we'll make those decisions from there.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
So when I try to buy my new truck online, I always like to build my truck and then I'm like, I get, and start taking stuff off. What percentage of stuff are we taking off in terms of how much ballast do we have to get rid of? And is the project, project still viable? Like, do we still have a truck at the end or do we just have more wheels?
No, we've been, uh, in, in discussion with Daryl, um, and, and senior team. One thing we're, we're adamant about is making sure that this is still the facility we're looking at. It's a facility that's going to be here for the next hundred years.
Excellent.
So again, you know, this ruining the camera systems, those, those type of things, but we're just looking at every option of where we can. Like, you know, if that means we've got a trial floor instead of a polished floor, you know, what's that number coming in at? I think the biggest work is a civil. I think that's the price tag we're interested in seeing coming in. And like I said, that we would phase out with our forces. Uh, it'd be a project for our team.
Yeah.
Um, a little different than what we're normally used to doing, but I think it'd be a great experience and, and we will do forward with that. So basically the contract price, if this goes ahead, is the, you know, the contractor brings in utilities. You do the grating around the building, thirty feet around, that's it. And we take over from there. Okay.
But yeah, one second, you could also reflect that there might be a change in pricing because we're going from the fall potentially to the spring. So maybe a little bit higher in some of the, the supply chain, but the reality is you're not rushing and, you know, then you start doing concrete with, with cribbing and covering, you know, all those expenses come up where you're going to start fresh in the spring with the warm weather, not insulating and heating.
Yeah, but on this project, uh, uh, Mayor Davis, we did give the flexibility that could do, it could be a start to spring. So I don't know if that will be an impact, um, but we'll see from there.
This is very interesting.
Just an important information note for council and, and the public. So we're, we're not sharing the bid numbers tonight. Only because we're not legally able to yet because we're still in the tender process for both projects. One, the cancellation of the Pebble Beach tender, uh, once that's complete, we'll, we'll post, uh, you know, the compliant bid. Uh, but with respect to the works garage, um, you know, as, as Mr. Perez indicated, uh, we're following, uh, the bid document process. Um, and we're in negotiations with all three bidders. Um, so we, we can't influence the process by sharing what those tenders came in at tonight. We will come back to council, of course, uh, with those numbers and at that time they become public.
Certainly. Counselor.
Uh, yeah, I just want to call, I know caution, but a word of advice, sometimes it's better to spend the money upfront than trying to retrofit a building post-product or post, uh, construction. And especially in nowadays with electronics, either fiber or whatever you're moving around in that building. It would be easier during construction sometimes than running conduit and kind of.
Absolutely. And, and one of the things we looked at is, you know, if this facility is prepared for the future, we've got the charging stations in this building. And that was one option we were not willing to remove as part of the cost savings. So, um, you know, you need a lot of amperage when you're charging, especially if we start looking at large equipment, which is where the bandage is coming from, you know, the public and, and the government. So we know that this has to remain in the facility.
All good. Well, thank you very much for the update. We'll look forward to some, some renewed numbers in the near future. Hopefully they come in with, uh, with some realistic, uh, plans and numbers that we can, you know, address. And then new council can move forward with the spring, uh, construction with the Pebbles because the community is excited about it. And whatever that looks like at the end of the day, uh, we, we'd like not to water down as council, like, you know, we don't want to throw all the slag. We also want to develop sort of the, the boat. We want to make sure we have the right projects that's going to suit our needs.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Up next, then we have a report on the tree canopies. I'm so excited to get to.
Who gets tree canopy?
Mr. Lee.
Oh, excellent.
Thank you, your worship. On March thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, Royal Set was given to Bill sixty-eight. This bill introduced a series of reform, reforms to the municipal act. The Municipal Conflict of Interest Act and the Municipal Elections Act and the Planning Act and others. As a whole, Bill sixty-eight focuses largely on matters of municipal governance and financial accountability. However, changes are also introduced that were intended to allow municipalities to be more productive in combating and mitigating climate change. Of the various reforms introduced, amendment to section two seventy of the municipal act has the effect of requiring all municipalities to adopt and maintain policies with respect to protection and enhancement of tree canopy and natural vegetation in municipality. More specifically, section two seventy requires that a municipality shall adopt and maintain policies with respect to the following matters. The matter in which the municipality will protect and enhance the tree canopy and vegetation in the municipality. This section of Bill sixty-eight came into force and effect on March first, two thousand and nineteen. There are six focus points of policy A D thirty-three and they are as follows. To recognize the benefits to the municipality from protecting and enhancing its tree canopy and natural vegetation. To promote understanding and appreciation of the municipality's tree canopy and natural vegetation. To support a robust tree canopy and high quality natural vegetation in the municipality and their contribution to sustainable development. To promote diver, to promote diversity, biodiversity in the municipality. To reflect and promote awareness of current and future environmental qualities, issues and benefits. To confirm the importance of wood fiber industry in the local economy. Oh, that was it. Um, there's no financial implications. The options are to approve A D thirty-three as presented. Approve the policy with addition, additions or alternate revisions, or do not approve the policy. Your administration recommends that option A be selected and that the tree canopy and natural vegetation policy, A D zero zero thirty-three be approved as presented and further that this policy be included in the town's policy guideline manual.
Great. Thanks. I do have a motion here that council hereby accepts the attached report regulation on tree canopy policy. The policy A D zero zero three three tree canopy, natural vegetation policy be approved as presented. And further, the policy A D zero zero three three tree canopy, natural vegetation policy be included in the town's policy guideline manual. Move by. That's next. Second, my council seeking questions. Counselor.
Um, yeah, it's a, you can tell this is probably written for Southern Ontario where there's big cities, uh, chopping down all kinds of, I feel like we have lots of trees. Uh, but you know, one of the questions that I've always sort of had, and I know other residents have asked is, so if we're looking to do a new subdivision, uh, the way it happened in the past was always you knock down every tree in the subdivision and then you build your subdivision and then you cut trees back in. Uh, in terms of building, are there ways to build so that you, I mean, sort of, uh, you know, kind of don't just clear cut? Or is that just, I mean, in terms of the building itself, that's the way you kind of have to do it? I guess that would be one question I had around.
Yeah, it's a, it's an excellent question. And, you know, one of the, you know, things we'll certainly look at as part of the, the new subdivision uh, is you, we've gone to utilizing a formula in terms of overall site clearance. So a good example would be the fifty unit going in a bunches and trail. Where you can see that, you know, the, the trees that were cut out were only the trees that were necessary, you know, for the development to happen. Right? So what we've done and, and through our C B O who has experience in this area is utilizing that formula, you know, leaving a percentage of trees on lot uh, through that process. So when we come up with our subdivision plan, um, that goes to an expression of interest. Those are all items that we're looking at. And that's why what we've done is put together a team approach, you know, from a C B O, technical, legal, water. Um, so we capture all those, uh, in, in those types of developments.
Uh, yeah, part of this policy or the, um, yeah, policy includes shoreline uppers and shoreline. And I'm assuming that was for marshes and deltas and whatever may be. However, with our shoreline development or potential development, um, will that handcuff our, um, development? Or because it was, it, because it was industrial, I believe, or industrial, um, will that mitigate that issue? And our, our official plan, will that mitigate?
Yeah. So our, our official plan will, you know, trump any policy that we have. So the official, you know, so heavy industrial as an example, uh, there'd be no requirement for, for tree areas. Um, but one of the items that will take, so one of the items in our strat plan for next year will be the renewal of our official plan, uh, which is due in two thousand and twenty-five. Um, and it'll factor in all these types of policies. Uh, when we look at, uh, those new documents, there are official plan and our zoning bylaw in terms of, uh, you know, trees and, and, you know, zoning and percentages. Um, so it'll, we're going to start that process, uh, next year, likely a two-year process to get us to two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, but all these policies, as well as a provincial policy review, takes place as that renewed will be, gets developed.
Great. Thanks. As you may have mentioned earlier, council, like in regards to nursing program, how time flies. We requested the government to rule official plan for five to ten years. And that was we're coming up with ten years already just for the official plan that we said, we just fell against. They had a presentation on that. The time does fly. Uh, in regards to the Fort Mac fire, uh, we did talk about the buffer zone that was going to, as our previous fire chief might mention. And that was a big concern as I've been considered and talked about the pre-canopy, you know, policy. You know, we, we all agreed that there was no need to do the buffer in our community because we live in the woods, but the reality is it could potentially happen in the future.
Yeah. So we have to go through, we're, we're legislated to go through an emergency planning exercise, um, every year. Um, where we must rank the highest threats to our municipality from a natural disaster perspective. And forest fire is one of our highest ranking. Um, so it's, uh, it's always top of mind. And it's probably, uh, I was actually just talking with, uh, Chief Earl about, uh, putting our exercise in place for probably December. Um, so maybe, you know, in, in light of this tree canopy policy, forest fire is a good one for us to look at as a, as an emergency planning committee.
Good.
Uh, yeah, just one more. And, and the other piece that's in, this is a kind of a mishmash of a bill. It's got all kinds of stuff in it. Uh, but the one that all struck out my mind was biodiversity. And I, I agree that trail over, uh, the creek at Cummins Beach is amazing. And it's such a natural wonder. There's, uh, long nose suckers that spawn in there. There's, uh, coaster specks and there's salmon, right? Like it's this great little biodiversity spot. And then right off the coast, you got Skin Island, which is a, a nursery for, uh, seagulls. Uh, Penlake is, and Pebble Beach is a, a warbler flyway. So I just wondered, is, is there a way to, I don't know if protect is the right word, but at least inform that we have these like little gems of biodiversity in the community. We're really lucky where we live. Um, like I always thought, you know, I had my kids go in and net the salmon and then put them back, but it should probably be a sign saying, you know. this is, this is a pretty sensitive area. Maybe you should do that or, or, you know, like, like we value places because we give them value. And like one of the reasons I value Pen Lake is because the warblers come there twice a year, right? And one of the reasons I value Cummins Beach is because, you know, those fish use it as a, as a place to spawn. So I don't know if that's a, you know, not a big project, but just that idea of naming the places in our community. They're pretty amazing times by the diversity.
I think it's a, it's a good fit with the OP renewal, to be honest. Biodiversity is something we're going to have to capture through our policy review as part of the OP. And it's a very extensive consultation process for an official plan with the public and with the province. So I think that's a good place for it. And just, you know, that, that note got me thinking about an application that we submitted recently to the Natural Resources Community Fund, I think it was called. And we've submitted it for the golf course to, hopefully if we're successful, I'll bring it back to council for budget next year to get us away from taking water from Duncan Creek and utilizing stormwater management and rainfall for the golf course. So, you know, we're, administration's continually thinking of ways and, you know, and, you know, improving our biodiversity. And I just highlighted the golf course was, we haven't gotten word back. Our application's been accepted and we'll know next year on what that looks like. But I think the OP process and the consultation of it will capture all those items.
Awesome. Thank you.
With that being said, I call official on favor. Next, I have a motion here that council hereby approve the following check runs for payment. Council payable August 959,151 dollars, nine cents. September, 1,194,866 dollars, 26 cents. Payroll, August, 2,203,335 dollars, 43 cents. In September, 289,216 dollars, 38 cents. Move by. That's the least I might counsel. Any questions in those check runs? Here you go. Call a question on the table. Very, thank you. Okay, next couple of reports, verbal reports on my attendance last week at the Northern Ontario Area board meeting as well as meet and greet, social, a great opportunity. Mrs. Porchinsky couldn't attend with me, but I went up and had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Rickford as well as parliamentary assistant Holland, Kevin Holland, who was the Thunder Bay at a co-kin rep. So great opportunity, met all the board members as well for the heritage fund. And of course, my purpose there was mostly lobbying for the town marathon and I had the opportunity to, after Mr. Rickford's, like, overview and update and the fun about how we in Northwestern Ontario are not applying for huge amounts of money. I did share with him again that we will be applying for some huge amounts of money come January. Specifically around, as you heard from the report around the port authority as part of strategic plan for the town marathon. So very encouraged about that. They're very excited about it. I made, made the awareness for all of the individuals on the board that I met, that how important it was for the fact that marathon in the region, but as well as with our partnership with our First Nations neighbor PN. And they were very excited as well, but so looking forward to that application process going in for that. Also an opportunity to speak with Paul Pepe, as Mr. Porchinsky may have mentioned. He's very excited about the cruise line and how they're going to enhance even bigger and better for 23 and more, so in 24. So there is a great opportunity through the trail committees, who is seven to have the port authority be launching a docking area for that very purpose for those cruise ships. And, you know, the impact obviously will be the local restaurants and the stores and people mingle within the community as well as being taken advantage of our outdoors. We don't have a lot of other cultural things here at Marathon, but we do have cultural aspects with our First Nations community as well as Paksaw and the trail systems there, as well as our own trail systems in our backyard for group set up. So very exciting. And that was a great opportunity to meet all the board members. It really changed a lot. It's amazing how many, how much of the board members changed over the years. So it's, it's good to have that interaction with them and make, make them aware of who we are. And more than anything, it's who we are. A letter goes a long way, but the face to face really goes a long way as well. So glad I attended. Then, of course, I came home and went back, attended your council night. And I got up very early Thursday morning and off to Toronto for the AMO in October board meeting. We met Friday, sorry, Thursday afternoon and discussed the strategic plans going forward for AMO as well as orientation. There was a bunch of new board members that were elected and appointed through the AMO AGM in August in Ottawa. So they were brought up to speed and, and had an opportunity to speak with our northern and provincial caucuses all through the different eight bodies that represent AMO. Us, of course, dealing with Phenom and Noma, talking about that and their impacts. And of course, Friday morning, getting up very early at the AMO board meeting. And that was around government relations. We discussed the housing, more detailed plan coming forward from our housing policy and the House Committee, which I sat on in November, they've had an opportunity to meet with the provincial government through the MOU table. And we all know that the government's trying to commit to, you know, the 150,000 homes and, you know, what does that look like over the next 10 years, 1.5 million, sorry, over the next 10 years? Bill three, the Strong Mayor's Act, we discuss that in length. Again, of course, you know, that is legislation has been passed. The city of Ottawa and the city of Toronto both have it. The government's still pushing forward for all municipalities. We're pushing back with the paper on that through the policy committee for that. We don't agree with the Strong Mayor's Act. We believe that Bill three is something that it's just not, we're, we're living in a democracy. We believe that mayor and council should, should work together, not having that. And the biggest thing come onto this was the fact that, you know, I don't necessarily like the CEO or the clerk or the CBO or the treasurer. I got the authority under the act to go and really fire those people, not I personally, but the mayor would. But how are you going to attract those individuals now when that's happening all throughout? You know, so I'm really scary for those professional positions to attract. That was one of the biggest things I think what AMO took a stance on. I care, we took a more look at the community consultation process. How do we get people involved? Because there is a big lack and, you know, bills get put out there, the bill writes the RV site. Then we all will make comments, even within our own, we just heard from our CEO, when generations comments back for, you know, the environmental assessment that the government opened up for that final comment period with the federal. Most people don't comment on it. They talk about it, but they, nobody ever talks and goes and comments. But the people who comment are always people who are firsthand, that are always opposed to projects, more so than in favor of it. Whether it's a mining project, it's a development project, whatever it might be. So we have to get more people involved in that. That was a big discussion around that. And all of us represent, you know, the spies throughout the province, which, and of course, big, big, a lot of discussions on who's not running, who's going to be back at the AMO board after the 24th of October. Because there is 43 of us and there's only maybe eight or so administrative people, so majority are elected officials. So there's a few affirmations in there, but there could be a lot of change up like in any, any organization, of course. Homer's pension update, the fund is, is doing well, but it's a bit down because of the due, due to the market conditions. Obviously, we're all seeing that in any portfolio you might have. The war with Russia and Ukraine has really affected the European market where Homer says some major investments as well. So there was a big talk in that. One call, gonna get that resolved. There's a big push on that and the penalties and who's going to pay, you know, whether it's Union Gas, Enbridge or you do the utility Shaw, whoever, but, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna push back. Their biggest problem they're finding is that, again, they get the call and they don't have the amount of staff to get out and locate. So the work, the policy group is working on that. That, that is really impacting us. Of course, with the impact, the data sharing and the reassessment coming forward in the next year for the, the new assessment year for 23 going into 24 is a big thing and how is it going to impact? And, you know, it's amazing that a lot of people still don't understand that we need $5 million stockholder supply. Whatever our range of, of the assessed value of our homes doesn't reflect of, you're going to go up and leave some balance, you're going to have to, the municipality is going to have to readjust their percentage of the taxation based on the assessed value. But people in a lot of communities just feel like, well, my house, Marathon specifically, my home was worth, you know, 100 grand in 2016 and now it's 100, 300,000. Well, I'm going to pay three times the tax. Not necessarily. You might have a small increase based on the needs of the municipality. We all have as council, whatever the council of the days will have to readjust their, their overall assessed percentage of that assessed value of the homes. So that was, that has, that message has to get out. People are, so we're asking Impact to get that message out and get it out loud. But we've asked that before with them, Impact as well. The Wendy Landries are also a board on, on a member of the board for Noma and AMO. We've asked her to make sure that Impact gets that information out to people how or when soon, but that was good. So it was a pretty good session and we had a lot of opportunities. Of course, we all kind of shook each other's hand and said, good luck on the 24th of October. Most cases, there is an election for most people. So it's a good board meeting. Any questions? Okay. Next, I have a request we received with Food Bank seeking financial assistance. Mrs. Porchinsky, you want to add like that or just go?
Yeah, so this was an item that was forwarded through my office from Mr. Giuliani, who was the chair of the community collective in the food bank with a request for council to reconsider an additional $5,000 contribution to the food bank this year. They had initially requested 10,000 and through our budget process, council approved 5,000. They've now asked council, based on rising food prices and some of the challenges, to reconsider the $5,000 as part of the 2022 budget. And obviously they'll resubmit a request for 2023. So the item before council tonight is, does council wish to approve an additional amount, not approve it, or defer it to a later date?
So again, motion here put on the floor first, and we have other questions. The council approves the request from the Food Bank, dated September 9, 2022, and that amount be taken from the 22 operating budget for the support of the request. That would be for this year only, then it would have to be requested for 23 as well. So it's only for the remaining of 22.
So they've, they've asked for, they've requested an additional $5,000, which would bring them to the $10,000 contribution for 2022. But of course, council can consider any amount or no amount. That's fully within your burden.
So I need more than a second to put on the floor. Counselor Bush, counsel, like, questions, counsel.
Yeah, I, I just, I mean, I, I would support it simply because anybody who's been to the grocery store lately, the, the price of food is crazy. And I know they moved from giving bag groceries to cash cards, which I think is a good administrative thing. I just don't think those cash cards aren't going where they used to go. I also think there's a, you know, a growing population that's facing a bit of a housing crunch. So there's some economic issue there. I think it is extremely tough to get by right now. So I would defer to administration to say, what, can we find the $5,000? But certainly it feels like a, a time of need in terms of that particular vulnerable group or community.
Everybody else constitution.
Because this wasn't budgeted, can we just take it out of the councilor's donation? I believe we still have that fund.
We have very little, maybe.
We, I, Mr. Verbo had a look at it today and there is $5,000 remaining in the Economic Recovery Fund. That was not expended. So if council chose to approve $5,000, it's an economic development line item, but it could come out of there that theoretically doesn't put an additional 5,000 burden on the budget.
Then I'm, I'm, oh, sorry, then I'm a paper.
Would it, I mean, the other thing is, of course, it's already October. So if the $5,000 weren't kind of used in 2022, my hope with the food bank would be, would reduce the request in 2023 by whatever was left over. Like that would be the understanding.
I, I think the honesty, the simplest way to approach it is either, you know, and this is just administratively, right, is to approve it. Right? Or not, because your term of council is ending. The new term of council, one of the very first items that'll be on the agenda is the 2023 budget. And at that time, you know, the, the request will go out to organizations to bring forward their 2023 requests. And they should be reviewed on that basis, not based on 2022 left over.
Okay.
Right. And, and we've seen in the past, the previous where they've had surpluses from the regional distribution center as well. So times were different. So you can definitely make the, what the council can make the decision based on the the funding and their financial situation going into 23. It's all fair. So with that being said, we'll put in the amount of the request of $5,000 for remaining of 2022 coming out of the Economic Recovery Fund.
Or does administration want to find it somewhere else?
No, that's, that's already been levied.
Okay. So with the move, second is permission. Call a question on the favor. Very, thank you. Information we received from the Ontario Fire Marshal's Office requesting that October 9, 2015 be aligning with all messaging within the fire prevention winter theme for home fire escape planning. Antareans can appreciate the understanding of working with smoke alarms. And we just had our fire chief leave because he has alarm on. So, you know, we are on top of it. So we know that we want to make sure everybody's home and they're safe in their home. But the question remains, do they know what to do when the smoke alarm sounds is the key. This is why we are challenging Antareans to plan a record breaking escape. The Ontario Fire Marshal has designed a suite of products specifying the fire departments, stakeholders and groups in this event and throughout their communities. And the product span, everything from fire prevention, winter motion materials, public safety messaging. Our fire department does an excellent job. They have open houses. They have all kinds of programs. They go to homes. They've done the fire alarms. They've done smoke detector, you know, all the stuff is there. So they're doing a great job. So we encourage them to continue that. And that's so that all the people in our community don't have to ever use their fire alarm or smoke detector to get out of a fire situation, but please be prepared and plan with your children and your spouses within your home.
Yes, I also like to reiterate, part of this plan is also that you develop an escape plan, fire escape plan for your house. So if you have younger children who are capable, one of the best things you should make sure they understand is how they can open their window. And to get access out of their house because they may not always be able to use the halls. So I think that's something that as a parent or wherever, grandparent, you, you discuss with your family. And then also have a meeting point. So you know who may not be, who may not go out of the house. So one of the things is that the part of this challenge is also develop a fire escape plan.
Good. Thank you for that. I do have a motion here that council hereby claims October 9 through 15, 22, declares fire prevention weekend for the town marathon. Council hereby claims October 9 through 15, 22, 15, prevention week and the theme being plan, a record breaking escape. Move by. That was Suki sent by council. Favor. Very, thank you very much.
We're just a point of information for, for council. This was actually one of our discussion items at our tenants committee meeting at Peninsula Manor that Mr. Brown and I attended with the group over there. They recently completed a fire evacuation and did it in record time, under six minutes with the oversight of our fire department. So very important topic, no question.
Okay, one piece of information regards to the upcoming municipal school board elections. Internet voting is a method of use for the 2022 municipal school board elections for the municipality. You will have 10 days to vote, starting from the 14th through to the 24th. Who can vote in municipal election? Anyone who can vote in municipal elections who is on the date of the election is 18 years of age or older, a Canadian citizen and either a resident of the municipality, property owner, tenant, spouse, or an owner or tenant of the municipality during a specific time just before the election. How can I vote in municipal elections? You will receive your voter instructions letter with a personal identification number through Canada Post that will grant you access to the voting system. What do I do if I'm not on the voters list? If you know you have not received your PIN by October 12, please come to the town hall and see the deputy clerk police, please to register on any weekday, Monday through Friday from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. You will need to show your ID, which contains your name and address. Voting will open Friday, October 14th, as I stated, at 10 a.m. and close Monday, October 24th at 8 p.m. We will not be offering phone voting. It will be online only. With that being said, Miss Lee's, they can come to the municipality to get instructions on, you'll have a system here if they do not have access to a computer.
They will have a kiosk here.
Right. So that will be available. You will be also in the one's marathon public library.
Yes, they're not an official assistance area, but they will, like, they have access to computers.
Right.
So I am discussing just the basic generic, general, this is how you get them on and then just let them go.
Good. So, yeah, so if anybody feels comfortable going library, they go and register their PIN number they received, go in and vote.
That's correct.
Perfect. In, in regards to the actual PIN, I think, I mean, all of us, anybody who hasn't got one, I've got mine, everybody's got theirs already. So please reach out to the town and get your PIN if you want to vote because without that you can't vote.
Correct.
Good.
Just a comment, though, if you don't have it, I can, or if you've lost it or, but you don't get it, you just come in and I can reprint a PIN.
Okay.
So it's the same, it's just like within 30 seconds.
We're making every avenue accessible to you to vote, you'll vote in our community.
Correct.
Great. And we'd encourage everybody to go vote. And there's no reason why anybody should not vote for your democratic position. And in municipal, provincial, federal, we see what's going on around the world. The people kill and die for the right to vote. And we would encourage people to get out and do their civic duty and vote. So looking forward to that. And with that being said, we are not having our fellow councilor, councillor Malice, due to the personal reasons, but I would, I would certainly extend my best wishes to all of my fellow councillors in the upcoming election. And of course, with the new candidates as well that present. And of course, with the new candidates as well that presented themselves last week at the candidates' night. I was very pleased when I sat in the audience to listen to all representatives looking for a position at Marathon Town Council, that they're all focused on making Marathon the good and better place it is to live and work and play. There was no mudslinging. There was no criticism about previous councils and what they did or didn't do. So that was really nice to see. And everybody's coming forward with a positive attitude about how we want to make our community a really good place to live. So I appreciate that. And again, best wishes to all of you and the other individuals who are here. And so look forward to our council on the twenty-fourth, eight oh five PM.
Twenty minutes.
Okay, so with the internet voting, we it'll be a lot quicker. We won't have to wait till eleven or. So good luck all, and appreciate your time that you've served in this council. We don't have an update, but we won't. We'll have the swearing-in ceremony after the election in November. So if we're not together again, I really appreciate working with you all. And if we are, then we'll look forward to that. We'll go have a pop.
A pop.
Thank you.
Thanks, your worship.
Okay. We are going into a closed meeting to discuss labor relations, employee negotiations, and so direct following this public meeting. So thank you very much. We do that during at the hour of five thirty PM. Thanks a lot. Have a good night. My council, thanks.
Thanks.